Praise the Lord. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to our June 3225 special call City Council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to set real estate rate, real property rate. May I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to create an ordinance to set the real estate tax rate at eighty-four cents per hundred dollars.
Second.
Have second.
I second it.
You second it?
Point of this call meeting was to set the real estate rate, not to direct staff.
This is with your packet. Should be on civic. We don't need to direct staff if it's already been done.
Ordinance has been set.
Yep, you seem to fill in the numbers.
Okay.
If I can get a printed copy, that'd be awesome.
It's coming your way. That's the one that was handed out Tuesday.
Okay. Is there any discussion on your second?
I don't know if the vice mayor wants to speak to his motion first. I'm happy to speak to my second.
I'd be happy to speak to the other issues. Yeah, let me just slightly amend my motion since he made a point about it. I am not trying to direct staff. It looks like it has been written. So I'd like to adjust my motion just to basically say that council set the real estate rate at eighty-four cents.
Second. You want to speak to your second?
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Everyone here and those watching probably know that I have been a large proponent of equalization. Again, with equalization, the city would receive more revenue than the previous fiscal year. I've said that a number of times, but... Thank you. That is factually accurate. But it is less than the proposed budget, so it is a reduction in the proposed increase. With that, I recognize that this is a body of equals, and as such, we all have to come to the table and figure out where that compromise can occur. And I'm very grateful to the mayor for the discussions that we've had, and I absolutely trust your heart and love for this city. And so I will be putting my vote for eighty-four cents.
Anyone else? Ms. Reed?
So, I just want to remind everybody how we got here. And I would like to note that my time that I started to speak is nine thirty-three. Ms. Clerk, Madam Clerk. So, we had a proposed budget from our city manager at eighty-nine cents for the real estate rate, beginning of this process. And all the things that he mentioned and suggested in that budget proposal included things that he thought were important, the staff thought were important, citizens thought were important to add into the proposed budget. Then we started as a council, as a body, discussing those things, what we thought would be necessary to keep or consider removing based on what we thought were important to all of us and necessary. So you've seen us deliberate over the last few months. Last week, in our work session, we thought we were having some type of collaborative discussion where several council members, Ms. Timmer and Mr. Missions, seemed to be coming to some sort of agreement based on discussions they had had with the mayor over eighty-three cents, based on what the mayor said. So it wasn't hearsay. He directly told me that. He had, he directly told me that. He talked to both you and Mr. Missions about eighty-three cents. He had suggested, the mayor had suggested eighty-six cents. Eighty-six cents, which is three cents lower than the proposed budget, would have kept pretty much everything in to include the concerns that many of you are having today, the things that you guys are wanting to see included, would have been kept in at eighty-six cents. Eighty-three cents was where we looked like we were headed, however, and you saw us discussing having to adjust quite a few things in the proposed budget, removing quite a few things from the proposed budget. You saw Mr. Feraldi and Ms. Timmer discussing things that they were going to have to try to compromise over. That's where we left things off going into the seven o'clock meeting, what looked like to be a compromise, even though even at that time, there were things that were going to come out of that budget that not everybody agreed to. Then we gavel into the seven o'clock meeting, and it turns out that that was not the case, that equalization was still where some of my colleagues wanted to go, even though we had spent two and a half hours trying to compromise to get to a place where we thought we were going to have some type of budget to vote on with all of us. And that did not happen. We wasted time. So, we were able to vote on some sort of measures, which is what we voted on last, our last meeting. Again, not, that didn't make everybody happy. We've got one reading done. And now what I find out, as of last night, over Friday, when we had staff off, my colleagues come into City Hall on Friday and call this special meeting, even though you all know we had a ten o'clock special meeting, already planned to do our second reading. And then this special meeting is called why? Why was that necessary? And then I found out over the weekend, the same people who had told the mayor that they were going to be willing to do eighty-three are now having a handshake deal that they're willing to do eighty-four, when our last meeting, you guys all saw Mr. Missions with his flipboard saying eighty-four was a huge tax increase. And that's why he and Ms. Timmer said, absolutely not, we have to go to equalization. So now, we're supposed to believe today that eighty-four is where they're going to go, and now it's fine, and they want to compromise based on the good faith of our mayor that they lied to. And over the weekend, they've had some meeting or handshake, I don't know who with, besides, they had it with the mayor, someone did, to say that eighty-four is the way to go. We also heard Ms. Timmer say that trust had been broken, which is why she wasn't willing to go through with her agreement with Mr. Feraldi at our last meeting when we gavelled back into the seven o'clock meeting. Mr. Feraldi's made several attempts at trying to come up with creative solutions so that we could still fund what the city manager tried to propose, so that most of what was proposed could still be funded, and those were shot down. So there have been many attempts to try to hear from all the citizens, consider the real estate rate, give alternative solutions for funding sources, come together, and all of that was shot down. We had an attempt to have meaningful discussion at our last meeting, and then what we thought was going to happen didn't happen. Then we have shenanigans pulled on Friday, a second special meeting called, handshake deals happening over the weekends that we don't know, the three of us knew nothing about, emails that went around over the weekend that the three of us are left out of. And now the rate that they were calling an extreme increase of taxes is now where they want to meet today. And now they're going to agree to, when it still isn't going to cover a lot of what people wanted. So, I'm not going to vote for your motion because you've given me no reason to trust anything you've said or done. You've excluded us from the conversation, and you're now turning, going back again on what you said at the last meeting. And I feel like you've put the mayor right in the middle of it again. So, and all the while attacking our city staff, Facebook post after Facebook post after Facebook post, attacking the people working hard for months, trying to serve our citizens, for months, doing what we've asked them to do. I just think you want them to quit. And you've put their safety at risk, because when you demonize city workers and make people in the city think that they're horrible people, doing things unethical, when all they're doing is doing their jobs. I won't stand for it, and no one up here should stand for it, because they are good, hardworking people who have families, who are watching them be insulted and attacked. It's unacceptable. We can disagree respectfully. We can ask them to do more of what we want them to do, but not the way it's been done, at all. And I apologize to each and every one of our staff members for how you've been treated during this process, because it's not okay. And I have two minutes left.
Thank you all.
So, I will not be supporting the eighty-four cents because of the way this process has been handled, and I think there's more work to be done. And honestly, you guys might as well just vote on eighty-six, because at eighty-six, like the mayor was trying to do last week, everything that y'all are here to ask for would be included. So I don't know why I don't... So if y'all are going to walk, if y'all are going to walk your words back, why don't y'all just go to eighty-six, Mayor, and give everybody what they want. Thank you.
What's the deal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to speak to my motion to set the rate at eighty-four. I am, I had some great meetings yesterday with the director of the Jackson Heights, got a good tour of the organization. I was completely unfamiliar with it, to be honest, when the city manager proposed cutting it. So I tried to set up a meeting and go over and talk to him and see what was actually involved and to learn. And I did, and it was very interesting, and I learned a lot about that organization and the community that it supports. And I wish we could have had these discussions back in May or June, I mean, early June, not at the last minute. But that didn't happen, for whatever reason. I think everybody knows I supported equalization, because the facts are, every time we have supported equalization, the city has brought in more revenue than they did the previous year. That's a fact. And they spend more than the previous year. That's also a fact. You can look it up. You can disagree, of course, but that's the facts. So I supported equalization because I don't want to see a city profiting off of its homeowners the way... You know, the dollar, the dollar rate was outrageous. It was not even serious, I don't think. Saw some sort of gimmick employed, but I'm glad we finally did get a chance to see what the city manager proposed cutting. And it was really small font, and I read it as fast as I could last Tuesday. Only had about an hour to look over it. And when I saw the things that were being cut, we made some additions quickly to get some of the law enforcement, first responder stuff back in as best we could. After looking at it, having more time to look at it, we've come up with a proposal that keeps Jackson Heights open. I also yesterday went over and met with the board at the Templeton Center, another organization I was very vaguely familiar with when the city manager proposed cutting, closing the doors. I did not see anything over there that really changed my mind one way, other than the board said that they had a right to, if the city does get rid of it, take it in for a dollar and they can take it back. There were many board members that spoke and said that they would be actually in favor of doing that. But that's their choice, what they do, after we do what we have to do. And I appreciate the work that my colleagues and I did this weekend to look at this and come up ways to keep Templeton Senior Center open and to keep Jackson Heights open. And one of our proposals included the library. But we've got some serious things in the city to do, and we've got to decide between wants and needs. And I love pottery. I took pottery. I don't know anything about bridge. I've never, I can... I've honestly never played bridge, but they seem to really enjoy it. They play three times a week. And I love that they have a place to play it. It's kind of up to them whether they want to stay there or not. But I'm in favor of keeping it open, and we've got a proposal on the table to do so. So I think that's pretty reasonable, given how little time we had to come up with that. So, anyway, so all these to be done more seriously. We'll talk more about that after this budget season is behind us and we can talk about the process, because absolutely, I agree with councilwoman Reed that I'm not happy with the process. I don't think it gave us full time to discuss things that we could have to make better decisions. I think a lot of this that we received at the last minute was ill-advised and still doesn't include a lot of the revenue that the Jackson Center brings into the city that supports a lot of organizations. A lot of this includes, you know, matching grants from the state and federal. That's the other side of the balance sheet. All we're seeing is expenses. We don't see the revenue. I don't understand why that's not on the sheet that we were given, because obviously that affects us. But anyway, I am supporting the motion at eighty-four, even though I have been consistently supporting multiple times, twelve at last count, to try to set us at equalization. That's what the people in Word Three made very, very, very clear. There are people that will probably have to sell their houses and move out of the city based on the rate of eighty... For the rate that we are about to support. But I believe that compromise is important, and I wanted to work with my councilman and with city staff to try to do what's best for the citizens of Lynchburg. So that's why I'll be supporting the eighty-four instead of what I have supported consistently up to this point. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Timmer?
I'll wait for the next.
What's the mission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, from the very beginning, I did support equalization. And just to kind of back up what the vice mayor said with numbers, right? In the adopted 2024 budget, they projected, city staff projected $214.7 million in revenue. In the actual numbers, we received $225.9 million in revenue. So we equalized in 2024, and we received substantially more revenue. That's a fact. You can look it up. We started out with an $11.2 million tax increase on this budget, and it was a very challenging process to try to claw back from that. So, at a rate of eighty-four, which I believe is going to be the lowest real estate rate that we can get four votes on, we have clawed back four and a half million dollars of that unnecessary tax increase. I think we have room for improvement in this process moving forward. One thing that particularly kind of really bothered me was how misrepresented the Social Services Administration position cuts were, because it showed, when we're looking at the expenditures, as if we're cutting several hundred thousand dollars worth of positions. But the reality is the total city cost of that was only seventeen percent, right? And when, I think you've got the packet, someone you got, this right here, right? Was given to us moments before we were supposed to vote on it. Now, I did some research in the old Granicus website. And previous city councils were receiving packets like this, with this kind of reconciliation on what's in, what's out, right? As early as April. Yet, we did not receive anything like this until right before we voted on it. So it was a lot to consume at the time. I didn't catch in the meeting last week on the social services, total city cost was only seventeen percent, or I would have been fighting just as hard for those too, because it's kind of silly to essentially give up positions that eighty-three percent is covered for by state and federal dollars. That doesn't really make sense to me. So that's a good investment, I think, with our citizens' tax dollars there. But that was never mentioned when it was presented to us. Never came up. Another question that I asked that was never answered, I asked it upstairs during the work session prior, was about this egregious increase in the city manager's budget, right? And I'll have extra copies of this for the press. I've got extra copies for this. So, the city manager's proposed budget actually says, "Highlights of the department submitted budget include $175,000 increase in salaries and employee benefits reflecting the three percent cost of living adjustment adopted by city council." Well, that increase with the same number of positions actually went from 1.2 million to 1.4 million, and it's a 14.1% increase, is what the top line says right here. And I actually asked that question in the work session, and still, today, in the memo they gave us, it wasn't answered. So one of the proposals that I offered was actually cutting the increase above the same cost of living adjustment that the rest of city staff is getting, right? Because I don't think that that's appropriate, that we just give certain departments massive increases in those salaries and benefits. And that's in the packet that I gave to everybody up here. So just something else I wanted to point out, that question, I've never got answered. Another question that never got answered that the vice mayor mentioned was the revenue coming in from the Jackson Heights Art Center. Now, I have a feeling it's pretty substantial, because I've talked to a lot of people that have used the Jackson Heights Art Center, and what I received was it covers supplies. I didn't ask what it covered. I asked for a dollar amount, right? That's what I asked for, and I did not receive that information either. So, those are just some highlights of what has made this process challenging for us. So with that in mind, I'll be supporting the eighty-four cent... in mind, um, I'll be supporting the eighty-four cent real estate rate, because I do believe that we can, uh, that we can restore some of these priorities at that rate, right? And I know we can't get the votes to go any lower than that. So, I'll be supporting the eighty-four cent real estate rate.
Come to the town hall tomorrow. I'd love to answer that question. Um, as far as the eighty-four cents, going back to that, I, I do support the eighty-four today. Um, I have supported equalization. I've spoke to that. Uh, since we're already talking about options A and B, um, I'm, I'm very grateful for the work that was done, um, as we collaborated on this over the weekend. Um, Mr. Mishin's brought a heavy lift in option A. And how to be able to restore the funding to the Jackson Arts Studio and the Templeton Senior Center, as well as the Social Services Administration cuts. We had further discussion, um, regarding the city manager's salary increases, which he just outlined, and how we could possibly leverage some of that funding. Again, the increase would still be above the rate of inflation and be at four percent of, um, a four percent hour, salary increase instead of a 14.1% salary increase. So, shifting some of that money into the downtown library in order to preserve the downtown library as well. So, um, I do just want to reiterate, and this is, this has been something that's been very frustrating, and it's not to malign any particular individual, but to understand the nature of a budget process, these cuts should have been before us long in advance. And we did not see them literally until moments, um, before we had the first reading of the budget. And, and that's an inappropriate application of the budget process. Uh, it makes it very difficult to make these decisions. I'm grateful that we had the time between the first reading and the second reading, um, as is required, to have that distance, uh, in order to be able to assess some of these different aspects of what needs to change. And so, moving forward, um, I will be supporting the eighty-four cent rate. I would love option B, um, but I will vote with my colleagues as far as however, um, however we can restore some of these services to the community, whether that's option A or B. I'm amenable.
Mr. Wilder?
Yeah, thank you so much.
I, I do not support the eighty-four cents. Um, I do not support all the other cuts from last week. Um, so I need to ask a question to the staff. So, if we go to eighty-four cents, what additional, uh, we've already seen several cuts from last week, with so, so many things being closed. With the addition, with eighty-four cents, how much additional money would that be reduced? Uh, and where would those buts, where would those cuts come from?
Eighty-four cents provides the same level of revenue, uh, assuming we leave the car tax unchanged, uh, as the, as was adopted in the, um, first reading of the budget. It's unchanged. Because that first reading would have left the real estate tax rate at eighty-nine, lowered the car tax. This leaves car tax the same and, and, and adjusts the real estate tax rate to eighty-four cents. So, it is essentially the same level of, of revenue as what was adopted in the, um, the first reading. So, the next step there, obviously, is there's been a lot of requests to potentially restore some of the services that were, um, reduced, uh, as part of, uh, the, the first reading of the budget. Um, I believe, uh, what we've heard from council, uh, from, uh, from, from all council members in the last, uh, week or so, Jackson Heights Art Studio, the Templeton Center, uh, the, the human resources reductions, the indigent burial program, uh, social services, the indigent burial program, uh, the restoring the branch library and restoring the tall weeds and grass program. Uh, if you add all of those together, you're looking at about $480,000 in, uh, additional services to be restored.
Okay. And as far as the additional, once we did the budget, the additional $600,000 for the police department, do we know where that's coming from?
Uh, yes, that's already built into the, uh, the packet that you received, Donna.
Well, they cut, um, that was done with the two and a half percent instead of three percent for city staff.
Raise. Are they going from July first or to Ju- January this?
No, it was still at July first at two and a half percent.
So, our staff is getting less of a raise. Now, the school system's still getting three percent? Do you all know what that?
Yes.
So, the school system is getting more, but our sta-, city staff is getting less? Okay, let's make sure everybody understands that. Um, we talked about, talked about possibly restoring some of the things, but overall, from the last week's budget, they went to close the list, make sure we're on record, they went to close the Lynchburg Downtown Library, uh, closed the Jackson Heights Art, Art Studio, the Templeton Senior Center, the Nature Zone, which I go to a lot, eliminate naturalist program, the DSS burial program, the two DSS family service jobs, DSS training jobs, juvenile services, case manager jobs, um, juvenile service team leader job, um, juvenile service youth worker job, um, reduce museum hours, reduce advertising for tourism, and various other cuts. Over the past twenty years, we've seen Lynchburg grow because of the investments that have been made in our city, investments in they, invest, in, in, investments that has made in our downtown area, so we can be a thriving city. So, with these great colleges coming, Liberty and, and Lynchburg College, and University of Lynchburg, and, and Randolph, where their kids come here, they want to stay here because they can see the city is growing. They can see the city is thriving. To the, the defense of our, our city staff, I appreciate the work you've done. Uh, uh, again, I also apologize. I mean, if you could imagine the voluminous amount of emails and requests that come to our city staff, I mean, one o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock at night, six o'clock in the morning, do you all have normal lives? Obviously, you're not where you can repeatedly, I mean, over the weekend, over the, excuse me? Okay, and I don't interrupt you. That's just, just being rude. But again, I mean, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I have, we can look at our emails. I can for you everything now. It's just so sad, the voluminous amount of emails and requests our staff received. We have been working on this process since, I think, December? And, and when the staff went through their sta-, the team leaders, the, when we continue to say we need more cuts, they went to the team leaders and they suggested various cuts. It's not the city manager. It's this team that's saying, we can cut this, we can cut this. The city staff has told us over the past six months, these, if you go to equalization or reduce the tax rate, it's going to be detrimental to the services. So, we have known it's going to be detrimental to our community and to the services that people rely upon. But again, they act like we, oh, I'm so shocked. They said it was going to be detrimental to the services of our community. So, I do not support the eighty-four cents. I'm, I'm in favor of the eighty-nine cents. I really want it higher, because I know about the requirements. If you can buy the same you bought last year for the same dollar, please show me. Eggs have gone up. All the thing I saw went down was gas. But everything else has gone up. So, you can't buy the same services you got last year for this year. Thank you. Mr. Farady?
Let's vote.
Let's vote.
This is to set the rate at, uh, point eight four. All right, let me reset the vote. It might have been stagnant. All right, initiating the vote again? I'll try to reset the vote one more time.
I voted.
All right, resetting one more time. And initiating once more. The motion passes four, three.
Meeting adjourned.
Now, we'll go into the second reading of the budget?
Second reading of the budget.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would move, uh, that the meeting at ten o'clock be canceled.
You'll get second.
Let's vote.
I'd like to ask for a city attorney as far as canceling the special meeting in advance, if there's any notice or anything that's required with that.
If all that's left is to handle the second reading of the budget, and council is good with that as a body, certainly you all could agree to do that. I mean, it's more efficient than doing it three times.
I have a question. The agenda has a whole lot of items on it I hadn't seen before. Some of them I have. So, by canceling this, we are not going to discuss any of those? I guess they're not emergency things, Mayor, may I?
Yes. Maybe my intent to essentially follow the agenda on the ten o'clock, just minus the things that are not.
Have they already been discussed?
Yeah.
So, this would only include the second reading of the budget?
Yes. So, now, if we would continue with the agenda at hand, it would be the second reading of the budget, and then we'd be finished. There's nothing nefarious here. It's just, there's no need for the ten o'clock meeting.
So, each of those, each of the resolutions that you all need to vote on will still appear? So, you'll know, it, it won't just be one vote?
City Attorney, would it be cleaner just to gavel into the second meeting and then immediately adjourn it? Just for this purpose of, I'm, I'm just asking that question from you.
You could. I, I don't think it's necessary. I think if there's agreement to just put it all now while we're here, then it's, it's fine to do that.
I'm comfortable if there's consensus.
Does this fulfill the requirement for the second reading?
We will be.
Okay, okay, all right. So, then we're okay for July first? Okay.
Looks like you have consensus, Mr. Mayor. We'll move on to the, the second reading of the budget. Uh, the first item will be consideration, oh, actually, I'm sorry. Um, it'll be divided, the budget will be divided into two sections. The first would be a consent agenda. Um, this would be items C and E, if you're following along on your agenda. Those were unanimously approved at the last time. So, this could be approved with one motion, to approve them both.
So moved.
Second?
Second. It's voted on consent agenda.
All right, one second. All right, initiating the vote now. Missing people? Okay. All right, it doesn't look like everybody's able to log a vote. So, there we go. They are. Yours is logged. It's logged. There we go. Yes. The motion passes seven, zero. All right, the next item will be B, if you're following along. Consideration of adopting ordinance O-25047, appropriating the FY 2026 general fund operating budget, excluding discretionary external services providers and schools operating budget.
Staff, do you have any recommendations on how to reconcile some of these differences that we've been sharing? And then I do have a motion.
Uh, yes, at this point, staff would, uh, do we have a slide? I think we can put up there. Uh, we, we've got a slide of the services or programs that we have heard, uh, from council that they would like to see restored. Uh, they're the ones that, uh, I listed out earlier, but it, I think it'd be good for everyone to see it on the screen. Our recommendation at this point would be that, uh, council, uh, adopt the, uh, the, the, uh, the, uh, the second reading of the budget at the same level of expenditure and the same level of revenue, and include these services for restoration, uh, and allow staff the opportunity to come back on August 27th, uh, with recommendations to either, uh, lower expenditures at that point, uh, or, uh, depending on how revenue is trending, look at revenue increases, uh, to fit them within, uh, the budget. Uh, that allows us some time to make, uh, uh, smart, thorough recommendations to council, and it will allow these services to be restored, uh, in, in the budget, uh, beginning July first.
Thank you for that. Um, my recommendation was going to be that we, uh, do a bit of an offset on the cost of living to whatever is needed for the Jackson, uh, Art Center and the Templeton Center, um, at bare minimum, if you guys believe that that is an approach that could still be included on the August 27th?
Uh, it could not. We would need to make adjustments to the cost of living adjustment, uh, prior today, uh, because it would go into effect on July 2nd. So, if we want to lower the cost of living adjustment, we would have to do so today. Twenty-six of August, I'm sorry. Twenty-six of August, not twenty-seven.
It's okay. Uh, so, I'm going to regurgitate this back to make sure, at least I understand it, and then hopefully everyone else does. So, what you're proposing is that we adopt what we have right now, come back at our meeting in August with a full-throated, fully understandable, this is where it is, this is what is needed, and then you can move forward. Everything's protected, that has been described. I think we're working on getting it on the slides for everyone so they can see it. It's over my shoulder. Good. And that would get us to that point. Or, we could do what I'm talking about, which is stop putting people on edge. They know what's included, they know what's not. And we move forward, and it's taken care of. Um, you know?
I, I would say we would not-
Is that a fair assessment?
It, it is. And, and I think what we would recommend on August 26th would not include any adjustments to personnel. It would look at non-personnel, uh, savings. Uh, we're, we're at less than half a million dollars. Uh, that's likely how we would address that.
I know I'm not supposed to do this. Folks, don't say anything. Nod yes or no if you think that's a decent way to move forward at this point. No one wants to nod? Okay. Fair enough. So, basically, what staff is saying, we pass the budget as it stands right now. There would be no cuts to Templeton. There would be no cuts to, uh, it's behind me. So, folks, if you can't see it, uh, basically behind me is all the things that would be held over for now. And then in August, we'd come back and, and find the ways to keep them going into the future. If that's, if that, if that is, if that is the proposal from, not the proposal, if that's an option from staff, then I'll make that as a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mishin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, earlier this morning, I sent all of you an email and asked you to provide anything that was going to be presented to council in writing before this meeting. We need to get beyond this point where things are presented to us in the meeting by surprise, okay? From staff. And with that, Miss, I, I've got the floor, Mr. Patrick? Mr. Patrick, I have the floor.
On Sunday night. Thank you.
I have, I have the floor. With that, with that, because I have not had any opportunity to review any of these items, um, before- items before the meeting that were presented to us, just like we voted- I'm trying to speak and I can't speak over the crowd, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's, let's be quiet so we can get this done, okay? Can we be quiet so we can get this done?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move to offer substitute motion to adopt option A that's been presented and provided to everybody. Staff has seen it. We've got an email this morning from staff that says it's viable, that this can be done as a way to balance the budget. The packet was sent to you, you were emailed it this morning. And- So, Ms., I have the floor, Mr. Farady? I am, I have the floor. So I make that as a motion, because I haven't seen anything associated with this, just like we weren't even provided a written capital improvement program to vote on last week. This is actually in writing, shows what's in, what's out. And what this does is it ensures that we're restoring the Jackson Heights Art Center. It assures that we're restoring the Templeton Senior Center, and it assures that we're restoring the social services positions. So it actually provides the path to get that done. We have an email from staff this morning saying that that is viable, that that's an option that we can do. And I think that it's important to move forward, knowing what we can do and knowing what's in and what's out. So I make that as a substitute motion that we adopt.
Substitute motion on the floor.
Does it have a second? If it doesn't-
He had a second. You want to speak to your second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just think that it's, you know, the people saying that they haven't had enough time to review this, they've actually had it longer than this packet was provided to us. So this was provided to us moments before we voted on it. Moments before we voted on it on Tuesday. Okay? This was provided to staff to ask first if it was viable over the weekend, and then as soon as they came back this morning with an email and told us that option A or option B could get it done, I followed up with another email and then copied in the rest of council, because there was no point in presenting this to the rest of council until we knew that it could get done, and staff confirmed in their memorandum response this morning that this would work at eighty-four cents. So that's why I'm making this as a motion.
Mr. Attorney?
And this is just a question to clarify our record, okay? So for purposes of what the substitute motion is, it sounds like it's a motion to accept the general operating fund budget, but with what changes on the ordinance that's before us? Do you know, Mr. Patrick, just so we're, we're clear?
I believe Mr. Missions outlined it. It's restoration of Jackson Heights, restoration of Templeton Center, and the human services reductions. Is that accurate?
Yeah, restoring the human services positions in Social Services Administration. And just to be clear, I did provide a copy of this to the clerk that she can include with the record. So option A is in reference to exactly what I provided the clerk to include in the record.
And so I see Jackson Heights, it says sixty-eight thousand four ninety-nine. It has Templeton Senior Center ninety-two thousand eight sixty, and contingent on finding forty thousand zero thirty-four. Is that correct?
Can I incorporate the memorandum response from the staff this morning with that as well, Alicia, that you can include that with the record?
I don't know if I have that.
Can I forward it to you? Because the email from staff says that you can keep that. So, that's it. Just incorporate those two documents.
Speak to your second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I spent my Sunday in church at eleven o'clock, but before I even got to church, I went to the, the center and saw the artwork there and saw the beautiful stained glass windows that they make. And a lot of people don't even know about that. I certainly didn't. I saw a beautiful garden out back that a local church has planted, that's growing and thriving. I got so many emails from very thoughtful, not form letters, but actually thought-out thoughtful emails from the community of Jackson Heights Art Studio. And, and I had a great meeting with the director. Brandy showed me the full facility. It's not large, it's a, it's an older school that was once used as a school in Lynchburg, and they found a great use for it. So it was, it was an enlightening conversation about how they were approached. She thought she was safe from cuts, and, and I said, "Well, you, you bring in a lot of revenue." You'd think, you know, because of the fact that you're supporting Templeton Center and the Nature Center and all these other places with your revenue, that you would be naturally safe. And I think even if you didn't have to spread all that around, you could almost support yourself individually. So I had no problem after that great conversation, the dialogue with the director of supporting Plan A, which restores the funding to keep that open. She was going out of town to go on vacation, for the first vacation in two and a half years, and she didn't know if she was coming back to a job or, or a place to work. And I think that's unfortunate. You know, if we talked about this in April or, or much earlier, she wouldn't have had to go away with that uncertainty. I guarantee you, Brandy's watching us right now, wondering what her future holds. But if her future holds anything, I hope it's that the community that she's helped form there continues and thrives. There's waiting lists to join those pottery programs. There's an amazing amount of very expensive equipment over there that I don't know who would get if that, they closed the doors. That's a big question. Who would benefit from closing the doors there with all that equipment? I don't know. I want to make sure that equipment stays there where council has approved it and where city staff has, has got it. I don't want it moved. I don't, she was willing to move to other places. I said, "There's no reason you should move. This is beautiful. This is wonderful. Why would you even?" She says, "I'll raise every bit of my funds if I have to individually, from the private sector to keep it open." I said, "I'd love to see you become a private-public partnership, like the, in the future, not now, but in the future, to help protect her from this sort of silliness." I didn't propose this cut, so it's not my silliness. I absolutely want to preserve-
You did this.
I'm certainly not- Just because I'm interrupted doesn't mean I'm-
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you.
Option A is going to the two percent cost of living adjustment?
I'm sorry, but I've got four.
Oh, I thought you were done. You looked at me like you were done.
You're not paying attention. Come on.
Oh, I'm paying attention.
I am trying to make sure the Jackson Center stays open, but I also had the opportunity after church. I don't know why that doesn't get more applause, but okay. I know, I know. But you're not enforcing it more so.
Yes, I am.
Okay. I think after church, I had a great opportunity to go over and visit also the, the Templeton Center for seniors, where they play bridge three times a week, and they do some dance, art, a lot of great things. They do a lot of things. I learned, I learned that yesterday.
Officer, officer, if they keep, keep hauling at the dais, take, remove them, please.
So everybody, Mayor, has made a, a formal declaration that if you don't adhere to our rules of procedure in not disrupting the proceedings, you may be removed. So certainly keep that in mind and ensure that council is able to do its business. You're not permitted to interrupt them while they're talking or deliberating.
So Mr. Dima?
Just to finish up real quickly, I had a great meeting with their board over there. They gave me the MOU that the city has with them to, to maintain it. I, I learned that if, if the city does give it up, they have the first right to, to purchase that building for a dollar. And several of the members of the, of the board indicated that they actually might prefer that, so they wouldn't have to deal with the city. And I could understand that. I think that would give them potentially some freedom, but they've got to decide their own future. And as far as their future today, I want to support keeping it open. And proposal A keeps them open, and it also restores the social services cuts that were proposed by the city manager. I want to restore that as well. And proposal that we're coming for is to do that. So it's a serious proposal by adults. It's made last minute, I understand. I apologize too that we're even having to be here. What a great amount of time you would have had to raise support for these individual things if you'd had more time. I can't imagine what this room would be like if you'd had the opportunity to support this starting in April and build support for it, the things you like. But let's, let's go ahead and make the tough choices. Allocation of funds is what politics is about, and I want us to, to go ahead and, and do that. And I support the substitute motion.
Mr. Reed?
Real quick question. So option A, because again, we were all left out of these emails over the weekend until seven fifty-eight this morning, is to do a two percent cost of living adjustment rather than the three percent?
Yes, in January.
Oh, and we move it to January. Okay. So again, I don't want you all to get kicked out, because I got in a lot of trouble forever trying to have anybody, you know, not say anything. So please be quiet. I didn't want to silence people. I was threatened about that all the time. So, you know what a backhanded, don't answer. A backhanded compliment is. So, the city manager, just for clarification to explain process, did not make these cuts to the departments. He did not. When he knew that the proposed rate of eighty-nine that he proposed with the current, the budget at the beginning of the year was going to probably be lowered, he had to, and recently, ask departments to submit. The departments, department heads were asked to submit what they would have to cut if equalization became a reality. They submitted it, not him. So let's clarify the lies that have been spread. He did not cut anything. He had to ask his department heads to say what they would be willing to cut if equalization became a reality. That's fact one. Two, in an effort to save now what some of those cuts were going to have to be based on those departments, my colleagues are saying, "Let's lower the pay raise to said departments in order to save these very things." So now, those workers in those departments will get less of a raise. Oh, you're welcome. Let's restore all these things which you get less money. So while I agree with restoring these, now those hard workers that work for you in the city, some of them standing behind you that might have to take you out if you guys say anything else, will get less raises for working for us. Backhanded compliment. So, I'll be supporting the original motion, which is we give them the full raise, or at least the two and a half percent raise that we had to adjust last week, which is not ideal. And we come back August 26th, and we figure out a way to keep these services restored as we've wanted to, without cutting pay more to the hard-working workers of our city. Thank you.
Mr. Wild? And Ms. Timmer?
Mr. Mayor, so we've spoken briefly about there being an option A and an option B. The substitute motion on the floor is for option A. I just want to recap some of it because I'm personally a proponent of option B. I had a little more input on that one. So I'm going to speak to option B, and I'm going to tie it back into option A. Essentially, what these proposals do, again, is takes the budget that was presented to us the night of the first reading of the budget, and looks at how we can restore some of the services that had been cut. And to speak to Ms. Reed's point, there is, of course, a dialogue between the city manager and the department heads. I believe that Mr. Hand reported on an email that went out asking the department heads for a ten percent in, cut in their budgets, which would have been absolutely unnecessary in light of equalization if you do the math. Perhaps that was just to gain possible options. But then those options are deliberated upon, and of course, the city manager's office is the ones that present that budget to us. And that was the budget that they presented with those cuts as the recommendations. Part of the reason that I am so strongly in favor of option B is it not only restores the Templeton Senior Center, the Jackson Heights Art Studio, the social services positions that we need, it also restores the downtown library. And the way that it does that is largely looking at the fact, so we're talking about cost of living adjustments, right? So we've, I'm going to give the timeline of it. On Tuesday, we had asked city staff to present a budget at the eighty-four cent rate that gave a two percent cost of living adjustment. They came back with a two-point-five cost of living adjustment. I, I'm amenable to that because it tracks at the rate of inflation. So the rate of inflation is two-point-four percent. What option B puts forward is a three percent cost of living adjustment, but in January. There are two components to that. The value of that is that it is more favorable to pensions. So it's more favorable in retirement if you see that three percent cost of living increase than a two or a two-point-four. In addition to that, there's the question that might be brought forward, and we've had these discussions before, well, where's the revenue going to come from on the back end? And it comes from two places. It comes from consistently having low projections when it comes to meals and lodging tax. And again, this is documented, it can be demonstrated in the numbers, that money and that revenue will be there on the back end. In addition to that, it comes from additional growth. And if you look at the, the building that is coming online, even just looking at Blackwater Run, there are still empty lots there. As homes go into those empty lots, that is not factored into the evaluation of equalization. So that's growth that's happening, not just valuation increase. And that natural growth will again bring in additional revenue. So, so this is a very doable situation. But the part that I do want to highlight again is there's a fourteen-point-one percent increase in salaries and benefits in the city manager's office that doesn't have any new full-time positions. And so bringing that down to four percent, which again, well exceeds the rate of inflation, and brings it more in line with what we're proposing for the rest of city staff, shifts that into the downtown library, and makes this, this really feasible. So that's the direction that I would love to go. I'm amenable to the option A because it restores, again, the social services, the Templeton Senior Center, the, the art studio. And so I'm, I want to lock something in so that we can move forward as a community. So I'm, I'm amenable to A. I'm very favorable to B, because I, I was able to have, again, some more input and insight into that process. But I will be supporting the substitute motion.
Mr. Farady?
Everyone's vote, I think everyone's-
Everybody's spoken?
Spoken, so let's vote.
Let us vote.
I got to get back to work.
On the table is to adopt ordinance O-25-47 appropriating the FY 2026 general fund operating budget excluding discretionary external service providers and schools operating budget, with the caveat that option A is now included, which has been made part of the record.
If you can restate option A again?
Option A reduces city staff cost of living, see, cost of living adjustment to two percent effective January 1, 2026, to achieve significant savings, one million sixty-eight thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars, balances the budget by fully funding public safety and judicial administration, restoring social services administration cuts, and reinstating the Jackson Heights Art Studio, sixty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars, and Templeton Senior Center, ninety-two thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, contingent on funding forty thousand thirty-four dollars in addition to revenue or savings.
Okay, that's the substitute motion right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it.
The motion fails three-four.
Mr. Farady?
I'll be supporting my initial motion, and I would ask that we vote and move to the next item.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
You repeat the motion?
The motion is what was on the board.
I'll be opposing this motion because I haven't seen anything in writing, any of the numbers in writing with this, and I'm not assured that they're not going to try to take the money from public safety to accomplish what they're doing.
It's about damn time this council takes responsibility for their actions.
No, I'm not using a point of order to silence him, I'm using a point of order to point out a violation of the rules that's been repetitive. This is the second time in less than 10 days that he's used profanity in a meeting, and that is against our rules of procedure.
Mr. Farady, please watch your language, sir.
It's about time we take responsibility for our actions. They could propose turning the water purple. If we vote for it, that's our decision. If we pass it as a body, that's our choice. They could propose anything. It's our job, as Mr. Missions consistently says, to hold them to an account. We have an opportunity to prevent that from being cut from public safety in August. So let's do it. And, folks, enough is enough. Let's just vote and be done.
Yes. Mr. Patrick. After we vote on this budget, you, and I know you will, by all means, figure out a way to keep Jackson Heights open, keep the library, the WES program, and all the other programs that we looked at, and I know you're gonna put forth every effort to try to save jobs.
Yes, sir, that, this vote, if you vote for the motion, then these things stay intact.
Yes. And when you return on August 27th, you would have all this in place.
Yes, sir, none of the recommendations would come from public safety.
Thank you, sir. Yes, yes, ma'am.
I couldn't agree with Mr. Farady more on the fact that we need to vote and be done. That's why I have hesitations about the motion that he has put on the floor, because it again extends this process even further. Consistently, there have been votes that have created these areas of ambiguity, where there's uncertainty in the exact vote that's being cast. And so, I mean, we could go back through the record on a number of those. This does it again. It says, "We have an intention," but it gives no clarity or road to that intention that protects priorities that have been previously stated, other than an initial agreement when it comes to public safety, but there's no clarity on where these funds will come from. And what has happened today is, it puts the position, and this happens all the time, if you continue watching, this puts us in the position of voting no against the things that the three of us have created a road to restore, and actually put forward the numbers to bring back, and have put that to city staff and the rest of council. And so it's gonna have us voting against the very thing that we have fought for over the weekend with a clear path on how to make it happen, because now it's creating an ambiguity around where it's going to pull from in order to bring these things back on the table. I think we need to pull it from the 14.1% increase and bring that down to 4%. I think we need to adjust the cost of living to get it up to 3%, so that it helps towards pensions in the future. And if that pushes it back towards January, you know, that's a valuable discussion, but I'm not for the ambiguity of continuing these conversations and drawing out this process without clarity on how to accomplish the things we're trying to accomplish. That's the reason I will vote in opposition to this motion, not because I don't support bringing the things back on the board, but I don't support the ambiguity around it and the way that this is occurring. Thank you.
With that being said, and hearing my colleagues' remarks, I'm gonna offer a motion to amend this, that I think could have me support the measure, and the motion to amend that I'm gonna make is that we reduce the, hold on, let me get the exact number, in the process of doing this, that we reduce the increase in the city manager's office that is above the cost of living adjustment. So that would be a reduction from personnel and benefits in the city manager's office above COLA to, hold on. Oh, I got it right here. $123,202. So, it would be an amended, amending the motion to accomplish this, but also by reducing the exorbitant increase of 10% over the cost of living adjustment of $123,202 to the city manager's office. I think that assures us that we're gonna start scraping back some of those funds to get there. So I make that as an amended motion to the main motion.
You want to speak to your motion?
I think I pretty well laid it out. I mean, when we're seeing such a, you know, the number that I use to compare this to is I look for a department that had a similar size, which was Human Resources, is about 10 people, city manager's office is about 7 people, that has seen no increase in FTEs over the years, right? And I asked the question, and I have not gotten an answer about that still, but Human Resources had a 4.1% increase to cover their 3% increase that was proposed, and the additional changes to the benefit, you know, whatever the cost of the benefits were. So reducing the city manager's office to the same level of increase, just like every other department is getting, I think is an appropriate way to start clawing backs on these funds.
Yeah, I'm absolutely for taking responsibility for our votes and pushing this off to staff to come up with some factors after the second reading is done. Is questionable in my mind, I don't think that's keeping our responsibility to decide where the money is spent or not spent. That's on us, guys, that's our responsibility. And the amendment pays for the change, it makes things happen. I still haven't been able to hold what is on the screen here, and now you're talking about how you're gonna maybe pay for it this way, that way, after the reading is done. And today's supposed to be the day, we're supposed to have it by tomorrow, you know, so pushing anything off to the future is abdicating our fiduciary responsibility of how the money is supposed to be spent. Let's pay for it, let's get it done, let's vote for this amendment, and take full responsibility for what the final budget is, and not say, "Oh, y'all take care of it." You know, that's not their job, that's supposed to be our job. So, let's take care of it today.
Ms. Reed?
So, just for clarification, and again, FOIA. The witch hunt in the city manager's office is a real thing. It's a real thing. Y'all could do a whole article about my colleagues' attempt to clear everybody over there out. So that was Plan B. That's what that's about. So it's either take money away from all of our workers, or attack them. Those are their great suggestions. Or, we're saying, trust them with what they just said, that we can keep these things open and come back on August 26th, and then let us decide that their plan to do that makes sense, because again, as Mr. Farady said, we'd have to vote to agree that whatever they come back with in August, because they can't do it without us, makes sense, because again, it's your money that we would have to vote to do that with. So nothing's gonna be done without our permission. So that was what we were trying to agree with, but no. A, take the workers' money away from them, B, witch hunt. So that's the amended motion. So I will not be supporting witch hunt motion. Thank you.
Ms. Timmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification. With the funding for the city manager's office, it's reducing a 14.1% salary and benefits increase to 4%. That's all it is. Thanks.
Mr. Wilder?
You know, I just want to express my support for the city staff. They need all the increase, for all this abuse and all the harassment they have received, they need any kind of increase they can get. I pray for them continuously, because it's so unfair. The treatment and all these so-called Christians, they give out to them. It is not, I'm sorry, excuse me, but I'm just saying, I don't know who they serve, but the one I serve doesn't treat people like that. Thank you.
Mr. Farady?
One more comment.
Mr. Deemer?
Just again, a clarification. Not having an exorbitant raise that no other city employee gets is not clearing out this section. It's bringing it back to reality, and it's getting us our library. And I think that's a good trade. Why would three or four people be able to get extraordinary increases that ends up with us having to close the library branch? See, but I think that's a great idea. Nobody's getting cleared out, that's wrong info. It's about not getting a huge raise, better than every other, than every other city employee gets, more than inflation, more than.
The manager relates more than any other city manager.
I think we have done a lot of the staff work to get to this point. I was told that my salary should go to zero by city staff, and I don't think that was a serious proposal, but it was, somebody thought it was serious. We need to be adults here. We gotta be adults in the room. There's real business in the city that needs to be taken care of by real adults, and that's what we're trying to do. And it's not always easy, and you can't make everybody happy, but I certainly would rather keep the branch library open than have exorbitant raises for two or three people in the third floor of this building. I just, I just don't see how that's a hard decision at all. Okay, so, I like the amendment, and I will be supporting it, because I think it supports the library, and it supports the city staff, and it does all the things that we should do, so I will be supporting it.
Mr. Farady?
If we pass a 2.5% salary increase, what percent increase are you getting? Mr. Patrick, if we pass a 2.5% salary increase, what percent salary increase are you gonna get it?
2.5%.
Mr. Bendis, same question. Ms. Braun, same question. 2.5%. Y'all rich, let's vote.
It's not 2%, it's the baseline. Anybody else make a comment? You need to go on the list. [inaudible]. Be the adult. Can you restate the amended motion, please?
This is bigger than Templeton, this is bigger than, than all, this is your inability to govern, that's what this is about.
Can you restate the amended motion, please?
So then, as I understand it, the motion on the table is to amend the main motion that's up here, which would include the potential restoration, but now to also reduce the city manager's proposed increase down to the cost of living adjustment.
Okay. Down to 4%.
Down to 4%.
All right, thank you.
Point of clarification.
The motion fails 3-4.
Mayor, could we please moat on the initial motion and move to the next item? Everyone has had a chance to speak, call the question.
So the initial motion is that language up here, and the restoration of those items on the PowerPoint.
All right, initiating the vote now? Just briefly.
Call the question.
I'm recognized.
No, you're not, he hasn't recognized.
Well, you do recognize me, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Timmer, briefly.
Yeah, briefly. It's easier when you're not interrupted. Just briefly, I support restoring all the things on the board, but I also support a clear path on how to get it done, and so I will not be voting favor in this motion, not because I don't support restoring the items on the board, but because it has not been defined on where the money will come from in the budget. Thank you.
Initiating the vote now. All right, the next is letter D, so this is consideration of adopting ordinance O-25049 appropriating the FY 2026 operating fund budgets for all other funds.
Another motion.
Second.
Second. Let's vote.
All right, initiating the vote now. Motion passes 7-0. Letter F is consideration of adopting ordinance O-25051 adopting the FY 2026-2030 capital improvement program and appropriating the FY 2026 capital budget.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? Now, have, Ms. Missions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the school improvements portion of the capital improvement budget.
Speak to it.
I'm in favor of repairing our school infrastructure, and I want to have a vote on the record that I support that, so I want to vote on this as a standalone item and support the school infrastructure package that's been presented in the budget.
Yeah, I agree, this should be a standalone vote, we definitely need to support our schools. The infrastructure is crumbling, and it's been neglected for years, and I want to make sure that the funding is absolutely allocated to fix that problem, so I'll be supporting this motion.
Mr. Farady? Substitute motion to approve the capital improvement plan as a whole.
A second.
Speaking to my motion. Y'all have lost every opportunity to negotiate beyond anything. If you don't want to vote for this, vote against it. If you want to vote against it, vote against it. All I've heard is, you know, delay, delay, didn't get, it's their fault, their fault. Y'all didn't propose junk until the very last second, and then said it's their fault. I proposed three plans to fund this entire budget. One didn't get a vote, two failed. Then I had tried to have open, fair negotiation, and that went really well, if you ask me. And so when it talk, when we're talking about the capital improvement plan, too bad that you want to vote on this independently. Make up your mind, is the capital improvement plan or not? That's my position at this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to ask you a question.
I will not yield for a question from him.
Okay. So, just to be clear, the question I was gonna ask, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
She has a second.
I'm speaking my second.
She could speak to her second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, I want to include everything that we voted on in the first reading, which was the schools, the pool, the library. That's what we voted on, wasn't it?
Yes.
And we agreed to do that. No funny business. A second reading. I believe we also included the Wiggington Road Project, although I think that that was Either way, let's just do what we said we'd do. Just get it done. Don't start separating things now. You said you guys wanted to compromise and work together? You've listened to the group that came here and said that you'd support what they're advocating for when it was left out last week? Well, let's represent the rest of the city who wanted the library and the pool, too. Let's not start breaking things apart today, when you're trying to come together with compromise. Compromise is compromise. Let's vote it through.
with compromise. Compromise is compromise. Let's vote it through. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to clarify, I'll be opposing the substitute motion. One, our first CIP vote was actually broken up, and I think that it's appropriate that we can break this one up, too. I want to vote for the schools' infrastructure as it is. I think it's a good investment of our taxpayer dollars to repair existing school buildings. There's other things in the rest of the CIP I don't want to vote for, and it's pretty simple why I don't want to vote for them. I haven't seen it. So when you look at the numbers that were provided to us in the CIP and what's in the proposed budget, there's about a $4 million or so gap between the ordinance that was provided and then the actual document in our proposed budget. I don't know about you all, but I would like to know what I'm spending that $4 million on and actually see it before I vote on it. So the schools' number hasn't changed. So I am in support of the school infrastructure funding because the number that was in the ordinance that was provided to us last week didn't change. Can I see your packet real quick, Mr. Deemer? And the... And I'm just going to read into the record, if I may, Ms. Finney, what the differences are in these numbers. So when you go to the CIP ordinance that was provided, and then you take a look at the budget that we have been working off of since March, I think that it's important to understand and read these numbers into the record. For the CIP, we've got... Hold on. There we go. All right. CIP overview. The CIP overview shows, and this is from the proposed 2026 budget, $62,589,461 in total city capital projects. However, the ordinance that we were provided shows $68,339,351 for the city capital funds project. I have not seen that. I cannot vote for something that I haven't seen. We're talking about... I'm going to stand corrected on this. A $6 million difference. So spending $6 million more of your tax dollars without seeing it, that's like, you know, like Nancy Pelosi saying, hey, let's vote on it, and then you can see what's in it. I'm not doing that. All right. Second is school capital projects. $10,950,000 is what's proposed in the budget. What was provided in the ordinance was $10,950,000. I know what that is. I can support that. And then the other items we have, airports matches up 4.5 million, water matches up 12,825,000, and then sewer capital projects matches up at 11,600,000, and stormwater for 2.9 million. I can't vote on the total city capital projects for $6 million of proposed projects that I haven't seen. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm asking, I'm asking you to support this substitute motion to allow those of us that want to support the school projects that we know what they are, or, excuse me, oppose the substitute motion. I'm asking you to oppose the substitute motion, allow us to vote on the school projects as the main motion that we've all seen, and then we can move on and vote for the rest of the CIP, which I'm sure it'll pass because it had the votes last time.
Update to Propose CIP, March 11, 2025. Here it is. It's right there on the website. We provided it months ago when this should have been taken care. I'm pretty sure that's what Ms. Witt was going to be pointing out.
That's part of it, and also the Wiggington Road projects were added, as I mentioned before the first vote, and then also a project for a signal on Enterprise Drive based on a new development in that area. Those are the things that were changed.
Still haven't seen it. Still haven't seen it altogether in Propose CIP. It's not all been provided in one document.
Anyone else? Mr. Deemer.
Mr. Mayor, I want to appeal to you personally. I really would love the opportunity to continue to separate these, just like we did in the first reading. This is the second reading. I'm not sure what the grand rush is to combine it all. I would love the opportunity to be able to support our schools individually because I have a serious problem with the full CIP as well. But I did even in the first reading, I mean, we supported more money than the schools asked for. I did. We supported more money than they even asked for. I would like to have the opportunity now, Mr. Mayor, to support the schools and vote for them.
Well, the schools are being supported in the budget.
I'm not sure why we're combining them, though, when we didn't do that before. I understand there may be some attempt to obfuscate what's going on, but I want to make sure we are focused like a laser on our schools, especially the buildings that are crumbling. And that's why we gave more money than the school administration even asked for. So please give us a chance to support that today.
Ms. Timmer.
Mr. Mayor, with this request, Mr. Mayor, you know my stance on the pool. We've discussed it a lot. I'm totally in favor of having the pool, totally in favor of having it open. As I did the research, and you know this as well, I found alternate options that had not been presented in the memo from city staff. Coming directly from the vendor that had serviced that pool for numerous years knows the pool very well. I do not feel comfortable voting in favor of $10.4 million when it is viable for about $500,000 with some change orders. Now, that doesn't account for the privacy fencing, that doesn't account for the building, but really you're looking at probably $3 million as opposed to 10.4. And Mr. Feraldi frequently points out that that has the addition of debt service. I agree with Mr. Feraldi that we should work to drive down the excessive debt service that we're carrying so that we have more flexibility in the operations budget. I think that's an excellent point. I think that the pool and the library are examples of where that inflation, or that bloat, if you will, is coming from in the CIP. I am fully supportive of the schools. I am fully supportive of the CIP apportionment to the schools, as well as the motion that was brought forward to accept the schools' fully proposed operating budget. Tried to pass that. It failed. But I'm fully supportive of the $60 million in the CIP to the schools. I am not supportive of the full 10.4 to the pools, though I am supportive of keeping it open. The other thing, and we separated this out last time, and I'm very grateful to have that vote on the record, I know there are a lot of questions about Wiggington, and there's a lot of questions about what is the city's responsibility and what is the developer's responsibility. And that conversation has become completely conflated and taken a lot of code out of context. You know, five of us voted for that development. Only four voted for the future land use map, but five of us voted for that development because of the value that it brings to the city, and it really is our duty to ensure that those roads are safe. And as Ms. Witt just brought up, you know, there's a signal going in because of a development, and there's a cost-sharing element to that. The developer has proffered some money, as she identified on Tuesday, and so the city is bringing forth money with that. It's happened with Greenview Drive. It's happened with a number of different areas in the city. This whole conversation's really been taken out of context. So I'm fully supportive of ensuring that Wiggington Road is safe. Those improvements, again, were in the capital improvement plan a decade ago, and the justification for that was new traffic on the road due to development, and it was scrapped, and it needs to happen. It needs to go through. So I vote in favor of Wiggington. I did on Tuesday, making sure that those improvements are there. And I have been fully supportive of the $60 million to the schools' CIP. I am not supportive of 10.4 to the pools, though I am supportive of keeping the pool open and finding an avenue to do that. And being able to separate those votes, Mr. Mayor, creates a level of clarity on where people stand. I would encourage that everyone that voted for that development still vote for the Wiggington improvements. I would also encourage, this whole day is to vote for those improvements, to not spite the people of Wiggington because you disagree with the development. So that is where my votes lie. I've been very clear about it, and I would appreciate the opportunity to vote on those items individually. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for staff. So when it comes to the library project in the CIP and the Miller Pool project, so right now, we have not sent out RFPs for either one of those projects, correct?
Correct.
This is just a proposal for the improvements needed for both, correct? So this is a figure we're working with, an idea or concept of what we are assuming the cost will be for improvements. It's very possible that they could come in under, correct?
Correct.
So we're guesstimating the cost in hopes we could find a, you know, a lower cost, you know? Obviously, you guys are just looking at what you think it could end up being to do the improvements on both the library upgrades or improvements for the structure, and then obviously the concept design for the pool.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. So with that said, I still support the substitute motion. We talked about no funny business for our vote today and just doing what we did last Tuesday. We separated out Wiggington Road. I say we support the substitute motion, do what we said we were going to do, and keep moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Wilder. Ms. Timmer.
I'll wait.
Mr. Deemer.
I keep hearing the word improvements. If I tear down my whole house and build a brand-new house, I don't think I'd call it an improvement. So I heard the word improvements multiple times, and let's just be clear. People need to understand, when I'm voting against this CIP plan, it's because of that type of prevarication that just doesn't clarify what's being proposed. It's tear up the whole pool, build a brand-new stinking pool. I love a great pool, but it just doesn't make any sense to do it. If I have a pool in my backyard and I bring in a bulldozer and dig that whole pool up and make a big hole, and then I fill that hole in with another pool, I didn't just make an improvement, right? It's not the way we would talk about it, but that's what's being proposed with the pools, and I want my folks in Ward Three to understand that this is major, major projects, major amounts of money that's being basically thrown out to do these two things, and it's way more than the pavilion down on the river or, you know, that thing. It's way more than any sidewalk to nowhere that we've opposed and passed. And it's... It needs a lot more thought. I agree with Ms. Reed about that, but I'm not going to write a blank check today to let them do improvements.
Yes, I'm renewing my substitute motion, and I ask folks to support it.
Go.
Initiating vote for the substitute motion approving the CIP in full. The motion passes 4-3.
What was the main motion?
The main motion now is to support the CIP in full.
Yes.
I'm not sure why it's not. I can read off the votes if you'd like. Would you like me to? All right. And the affirmative is Councilmember Feraldi, Councilmember Reed, Councilmember Wilder, and Mayor Taylor. In opposition is Councilmember Missions, Councilmember Timmer, and Vice Mayor Deemer.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I renew my motion. Let's approve this thing and be finished with the next side. Well, just renewing it, that's all.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes 4-3. All right, moving along, this will be letter G, consideration of adopting ordinance O-25052 appropriating $50,000 of the FY 2026 reserve for contingencies for use by the city manager.
No motion, please. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification for staff on the agenda. I'm not seeing the water, sewer, and stormwater rates on this. Is that something we need to vote on twice, or is that just a one-time vote?
It's only a one reading.
Okay, that's all I had to ask. With that being said, I'm going to make a motion to deny the reserve for contingencies.
Second. Speak to your first.
Just going to deny the $50,000 reserve for contingencies for use by the city manager. That's no further comments need to be made.
The only comment I would say is that the extraordinary increase to the third-floor budget is the reason I'm going to vote for this.
Mr. Feraldi.
What was the reserve for contingencies fund for last year in the manager's budget?
$50,000.
So this is the same as last year?
It is.
I'm not even going to bother to submit a substitute motion, so we don't have to go through all that. I'm just going to vote against the motion, and then we can just pass the thing. So let's just stop wasting time.
Ms. Timmer.
I'm actually going to vote against this motion. I do not support the 14.1% increase. I recognize that there are times of contingencies that are needed, so I'm fine with the $50,000, so I'll be voting against this motion.
Anyone else?
Oh, and I would like to tack on just briefly. Thank you. That a lot of the time when we inflate numbers within the budget, it allows wiggle room as far as how that money can be spent later on. So if we under-project possible revenue streams, then that winds up in the general and assigned fund balance. And there are ways that these monies flow that then there isn't accountability from the policy perspective. So this arguably is one of those types of ambiguous revenue, like line items, if you will, as far as operating. It's not a very significant amount. I think there's a discretionary element that's needed, so I will support the $50,000, but I don't support the general policy that creates a lot of those ambiguities as far as how those operational components or capital improvement fund components have accountability around them. Thank you.
Ms. Reed.
I will not be supporting the motion to deny this. I think there's a reason for appropriating this, so I will not be supporting the motion. I will support us giving or appropriating the money for the necessary reasons. That's all.
Mr. Missions.
Just a point I'd like to make on this. If I'm correct, there hasn't been a penny spent out of this in the last fiscal year, in the current fiscal year that we're ending today. That's correct?
That's correct.
So we had $50,000 budgeted, and then we never spent it. Is that right?
I wouldn't say never, but...
But we did not spend any...
We haven't spent it this year.
Correct. All right, thank you.
Call for vote.
All right, initiating the vote to deny. The motion fails 2-5.
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Second. Want to speak to your second? Call for vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes 4-3.
I have one more motion to make, and it is related to our rules of procedure, and the motion is that the special meeting for today was warranted related to budgetary matters.
Say it again.
I have one more motion to make. It is in compliance with our rules of procedure, and the motion is that the meeting today was necessary because of budgetary matters. According to our rules of procedure, we cannot have a special meeting without council affirming the purpose of that special meeting. So that is my motion.
Mr. Mayor, that point of order, Mr. Mayor, because he's referencing the rules of procedure, and I can pull it up if I need to, but the rules of procedure specifically state that that is required only when the meeting is called within 12 hours of the meeting convening. This meeting was called on Friday, and it's completely unnecessary.
I would defer to attorney.
Certainly, that's the requirement, as I understand, is the 12 hours. But if there is a desire to affirm what has happened here today and the importance of holding it the way we did, I think that's absolutely appropriate to have a motion like that.
Is it necessary, though?
From a legal perspective, I don't think so, but certainly it's justified.
Let's get out of here.
Okay. H.
Okay, this one is actually the first reading, and the number has changed since you all have not gotten to the personal property rate.
No, Alicia, we're in the meeting related to the 9:30 agenda, and this was on the 10:00 agenda, so we're not considering it. So we're finished.
It's all part of the budget, I believe. I'm looking at Ms. Witt.
That ordinance for the budget, and because there was no change to the personal property tax rate...
The percentage will change.
The percentage changed, so it's the same as what it was originally. So it's 30.64%.
And we need to adopt that?
Yes. It does need to be adopted in the budget by statute.
Okay, fair enough. So moved.
Want to speak to your second? Speak to your motion. Call for vote.
Just for a point of clarification, my number is different in my packet here. So the number is 30.64%.
That's correct. And it's different because there was a different rate for personal property that was going to be discussed, but it is the 30.64, which is based on a $3.80 personal property tax rate.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is to clarify for the public, since that was, so they understand what's happening. So during our first reading, it was understood that it potentially, that the car tax rate was going to go down from $3.80 to $3, and now that will not be happening. It will now be staying at $3.80.
Yes.
So just understanding that's what's happening.
And it just takes one vote.
Yes, Mr. Mission.
But just to be clear, we're not voting on the rate. This is the relief rate. Those are two totally different things.
Yes, this is the personal property tax relief rate.
This is not the personal property tax rate.
That's correct.
I'd be happy to read the title into the record.
Sure, that would be helpful.
So this is consideration of adopting ordinance setting the personal property tax relief rate at 30.64% for January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025. This resolution shall apply retroactively as January 1, 2025.
Okay.
Okay. There has been a first or a motion and a second.
May I have a motion?
There has been.
It has been. Let's vote.
All right, initiating vote now. The motion passes 7-0.
Meeting adjourned. Nope. Got a vote.
I think I'm making a motion to adjourn the meeting.
May I have consensus to adjourn the meeting? You don't need it.